To be, and so God, we pray, Lord God, we pray, God, for the mayor of this great city. We pray for our police officers and our firefighters, God. We pray for our communities, Father, and we pray most of all, God, for this council, God, that you will be with them, that you will guide them. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen? Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we just stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Could I ask for a moment of silence this morning in remembrance of the passing of the past Labor Secretary Alexis Herman? She was a monumental stigma and figure in the Mobile community from Mardi Gras to the Catholic Church, to philanthropy and helping to save Heart of Mary's Catholic School. Her community outreach and endeavors reached even Mobile from DC when she was working there in her influence. So if I could ask each and every one of you to just stand for a moment, for a moment of silence as we remember her life and her legacy.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daves. Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our April the 29th, 2025 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phone, please at this time put on the off or the vibrate position, the off or the vibrate position. Any person that is desiring to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the ordinance, the resolution, a public hearing, agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is desiring to speak to the council on another agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject they he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertaining to the City of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wish to express any concern to the Mobile City Council would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address this council. A bell would sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. Second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member to respond. To maintain the calm, there will be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of April the 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Proper to move in second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk?
Communicationist from Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. It's good to see everyone here this morning. Thanks for being here. I have two or three announcements and then one proclamation. The first is about a warrant, a traffic warrant clinic which will be held on June 13th. This is the third time that we've held such a clinic. It's been organized by our legal department and the municipal court's partner, and that partner is growing real alternatives everywhere. GRI is the acronym. It's Friday, June 13th, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Spring Hill Recreation Center. The purpose is to resolve outstanding warrants for traffic violations in an unintimidating environment. Want to thank our staff members, anybody that is responsible for putting this on. In years past, we've helped hundreds of Mobileans resolve thousands of traffic warrants. Again, we hope that you will participate, but you have to pre-register. You have to register for that at the citymobile.org website. Second announcement has to do with Mobile Parks and Recreation Department. We have a One Love Block Party, One Love Block Party, May 3rd. And it's a free community event featuring a step show, kickball, crafts, inflatables, local vendors, food trucks, and more. That's May 3rd from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Mike Dow Amphitheater in Trinity Gardens. For more information on the, on this, you can reach out and look on the Mobile Parks and Recreation Facebook page. This is part of our Breakthrough to Teens Initiative and the program is dedicated to providing constructive and family-friendly activities for local teenagers. Want to commend our team mentors, Elin Clark and Mackay Beck for the work that they're doing there. Also, want to announce to everybody that, and invite all Mobileans to a pair of very special events this, this Thursday, May 1st. We'll be partnering with the National Day of Prayer Foundation and the Alabama National Day Prayer Task Force. We have two services in honor of the National Day of Prayer. Want to be a sunrise service at 6:00 AM at Brookley by the Bay, and the second will be a sunset service at 6:00 PM at Brookley by the Bay. The doors open, the gate actually opens to the park at one hour before the event starts. So gates open at 5:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And the National Day of Prayer is really prayer for our community, being one of the most, maybe one of the best settings we have in the city for something like this. Pastor Joe and Linda Johnson will be leading it along with Pam Haynes Ministries. There'll be several musical performances. I want to thank everybody that had something to do with this. I would be quick to tell everybody that I would contribute the majority of the success of our administration over the last 11 and a half years has been a result of prayer. And thank you, thank you to all the people who have been praying and will continue to pray. So at this time, I'd ask Shree Lovett of the Alabama National Day Prayer Task Force, Region Six, you and your team can approach the podium, and I'll read this proclamation. And Ms. Lovett, after this, we'll meet outside and we'll take a picture with the proclamation, okay? And the proclamation reads, whereas the National Day of Prayer is a time-honored tradition inviting all Americans to pray for our nation, its people, and its leaders, and whereas this year's theme, pour out to the God of hope and be filled, which is Romans 15:13, reminds us of the strength, peace, and unity found through faith and hope in God. And whereas the City of Mobile recognizes the power of prayer to inspire healing, encourage compassion, and foster unity within our diverse community, and whereas in times of both challenge and celebration, prayer remains a steadfast source of comfort, direction, and hope for individuals and families across our city, and whereas gathered together in prayer renews our commitment to love one another, serve our neighbors, and seek peace for our city, state, and nation, and whereas all members of the community are invited to observe National Day of Prayer with us at Brookley by the Bay with the sunrise and evening service. Let us all come together in hope and unity, lifting our voices in prayer for our city. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby officially proclaim, Thursday, May 1st, 2025, is the National Day of Prayer in the City of Mobile.
Did you have something to say? Did y'all have something to say?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name, I'm trying to do everything right. I'm Deborah A. Preacher. I am Region Six, supporting for National Day of Prayer. Today, I was hoping that all of you, we sent you from National Day of Prayer, an email about the event coming up. The great thing about every event.
It's great, but this one, it's our mayor's last event as the mayor of the City of Mobile, so we've worked hard as Region Six to make this coming Thursday fabulous. I am so here to represent and ask any of you if in the morning session from 6:00 to 7:00 at Brookley by the Bay or that evening session, we have the greatest speakers, the bands, the worship. I wanted to make sure that you saw that flower. Also, in your districts, if you would help me, if you would maybe take a picture of what we sent you and send it out to your districts, I would so appreciate it. We also want to invite all prayer warriors, all intercessors, all prayer groups to come and join us and rally around May 1st with our mayor, and let's celebrate Mobile in National Day of Prayer 2025. And thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Penn?
I just want to thank you all so much for the service that you provide our city for praying, not just on National Prayer Day, but on a daily basis. That's what, that's what we need. I will be there at 5:00 AM. Well, it starts at 6:00 AM, I'm gonna be there at 6:00. I see that, it starts at 6:00 AM. I'm not gonna be able to make it at the evening because I will be doing the same thing in my district, praying at my church in my district. So, but I want to thank you so much for the service that you all provide, and I'll see you there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Buckley Finance Report.
Mr. President, Members of Council, I have just a brief report for you this morning. This is the General Fund Finance Report for March of 2025. Just two updates for you. In the next two weeks, you're gonna see a series of budget amendments come before you. I will send, in tandem with those, you will get an email that has a breakdown and explanation of what those are. We're doing a mid-year budget reconciliation. These are gonna just be standard cleanup reconciliations for the year, but you'll see an explanation of what each of those are, and if there are any specific questions about those, I'll try to address those before you see those in agenda so you'll understand what those, what those clarifications are. And then secondly, I'll be requesting sometime in June to have a brief work session with you, discuss some finer points for the 2026 budget. With that, on page one, you'll see highlighted in yellow that the General Fund Reserve Balance, which now is a static number, is $58,626,210. That does not change from month to month. The General Fund Operating Balance is at $116,639,242. You will see that number drift down as we get through the remainder of the year. Those dollars again come in at certain times of the year, and we live off that budget through the year. So as you see that number decrease, that's to be expected, not to be alarmed. That's just the process of the budgeting. Moving quickly over through one previous question that had been raised on page four of the budget, in the middle of the page, you'll see highlighted in yellow a certain series of numbers. These relate to miscellaneous revenue that includes dividend income, interest earned on idle funds, and interest earned on investments. If you move over to the right, you'll see where there are some numbers that appear to be in discrepancy, but they are not. In late 2023, the city transitioned some of its investments from treasury funds to money market accounts. Those revenues are trending up for this year. We simply need to reclassify those revenues. Currently, if you look to the numbers highlighted over to the right, that's about $8 million in budget that we had expected to see through the year. We're really projecting right now to have about $11 million in total revenue. So the next time you see this report, those numbers will be reclassified and reflect correctly with the projected budget as it relates to the revenue so far through the year. And then, most importantly, on this report, the last page, the last line of the last page, I have numbers highlighted for you. At the bottom of the page, you'll see $161,403,342. That's our actual year-to-date expenditures in the General Fund so far. Our year-to-date budget was $189,942,588. We have $3,374,000 in encumbrances and a year-to-date available budget of $25,164,483, with a net income or loss of the year so far, which is a net income of $41,366,229. So our report for the General Fund is exceptional so far through the year. We don't anticipate any trends that see that changing for the remainder of this fiscal year.
Any questions, Council?
Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Proper to move in second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted, and I'm gonna ask if you can cease the talking, please. Thank you.
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on August 23rd, Cathedral Square, November 16th, at Battleship Park, June 6th through the 7th, LeShure Road.
So moved.
Second.
Proper to move in second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to declare the structure at 1416 Oshel Road, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
This opened up the public hearing for this particularly said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item?
Mike Turek, one, two. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Has there been any evaluation from anyone here, did anyone up here visit this, decide to see what the state of it was before coming to this agenda?
Go ahead with your statement, Mr. Penn.
That's a question, not a statement, Mr. Small.
Mr. President, I'll be glad to answer that question. The house is next to the ogle trees on Oshel Road. The house was owned by a dear friend of mine who, for years, attended the Sullivan Center every day in her older years and.
So you went to the house?
Let me finish, please. And would eat there and attend the community. She had some family that was somewhere in California that I thought was taking care of the house since her death, I believe, which was about five or six years ago or a little bit longer. The house right now has totally collapsed. On the west side of the house, the seals are broken, the ees are now down on the ground, and the house is now falling into the ogle tree's yard inside yard. On any given day, with students from St. Mary's and McGill passing by there, they have the opportunity to inadvertently wander into a place that is extremely dangerous and hazardous, not just to the house and the neighbors next door, but also to the citizens, students, and kids of that community. So this is something that, 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 that we want to happen. I wish there was a process that we could save the structure, try to save the structure, but this house is right now causing imminent harm or may cause imminent harm to anyone that passes by it. And let me reiterate, I personally knew the lady that lived there. I knew her family. I tried to reach someone out in California. We were not able to find it, find them, and I wasn't. And I'm pretty sure that Mr. Dawkenbaugh has done the same thing, but this property is in really bad shape. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, without the pontificating assembly, yes, would have been sufficient. I think this is something that we need to acknowledge with these other properties that tend to come up here from time to time. I don't think there's any oversight before we get to this point. We're very quick to react and to charge the citizens with demolition and other cost efficiency structures. And I think if we did this at the, at a proactive, at the beginning front, we could save a lot of money. I think there's a lot of money coming through the Neighborhood Development Department that we're not looking at. I think there's a lot of other resources in unassigned fund balance that we're not looking at, these miscellaneous resources. There are plenty that we could be doing. I see we're pulling resources from capital money to put towards these type of structures where I don't think that's sufficient. And I think with our infrastructure needs, that is not gonna be anything that's beneficial for us down the long run. So I would like to advise, maybe something can be set up, this can be sense committee. Mr. Dawkenbaugh could look with maybe the entitlement committee and someone else with public services, and we can see how we can put money at the front end rather than having to come in and demolish these structures. Thank you for your on the floor.
Is anyone else that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to consider application for a certificate of public convenience necessity to operate a taxi cab service.
And this opened up the public hearing on this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Brian McMillan.
Is Mr. Matt Millen present? No. Did you Brian McMillan? No. It's Mr. Matt Millen present. If not, Madam Clerk?
Sabrina Mast.
Good morning, Sabrina Mast. So I'm here to speak about the newly groundbreaking project that happened on the 24th. The first question I have is, if I overlook this, correct me, was that even on the agenda before any of this took place for the citizens to see, to speak about, to hear about? Because I definitely don't remember that. Now, if I'm wrong, you can correct me. So I also want to say in reference to that, we had the Thomas James, R.B. Taylor, Roger Williams, Josephine Allen, Boykin Towers, and much of Orange Grove that were demolished, destroyed, what have you. Thousands of people were displaced at that same time, during the same time you got all this ARP money, millions and millions of ARP funding, which was supposed to go to the underprivileged communities. As we know, much of it was spent on foolishness and recklessness. A lot of it went to public safety, and here we are dealing with gun violence at an all-time high. So apparently, that was a waste of money. You also got one million dollars for the ShotSpotter, which has crashed. That was a flop. That one million could have went to District Two when he was begging for the one million or whatever to go to housing. That was another problem. So see, this is the whole thing. You're getting out here and you're building these projects, 23 units versus thousands of displaced citizens. That's just foolery. So are you gonna be a 23 more units, 23 more units, 23 more units? Is all that gonna happen in these units? As my calculation shows, you use 4.3 million. Those are gonna be 200,000 other homes, which is good for people that can afford them, or you say it's gonna be affordable housing. So I want to know how are you gonna come to the conclusion of who gets these houses versus thousands that were displaced? Because we know this has happened. So I had to talk about that. I would like some feedback on that, because I really am tired of standing up here just talking to a wall. Now, also, I want to say this. So I have no problem with people naming buildings after them. That's fine if that's what you want to do. I just know historically, many buildings in the United States of America, even abroad, have been named for figures that had civil rights movements, community deep environment for years and years, some even after death and their demise and their accomplishments. So now we're just naming buildings for our friends and our foes. Well, name one after me.
Miranda.
Just for knowledge, in 2020, R.B., the area had, if not mistaken, 340 units, 350 units, 350 units walked by it. And right now, we are proposing a plan of 741 units to go just along that corridor. So we are more than doubling, two, yeah, three, yeah, we more than doubling what was there in 2020 along that stretch. Madam Clerk?
No, wait, wait, Mr. President. Let's talk just a minute about the people that are trying to get to these houses and whether or not they can afford them. In the process that they are, there's a $25,000 down payment assistance that also goes with this and also lowers that cost from 225 to somewhat under that, which brings that house down to $190,000 at purchase price. The other thing is that people and availability of people, there should be, because of the HUD rule, then we should have a system in place that pre-qualifies some of the people that are actually trying to get there, meaning that they've gone through homeowner, homeowner training, they've gone through the credit process, they've gone through the teaching that HUD requires, and that creates a stream of people that are already ready to qualify to purchase a home. So for all the things that you don't see out front, there's a stream that's happening behind the scenes so that people are actually qualified to be able to purchase these houses. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
Miranda Pixley regarding Resolution 37633.
Hello, City Council and everybody in attendance today. I'm not gonna tie you up for too long.
Say your full name.
Yes, my name is Miranda Pixley. We are opening a business at 659 Conti Street, and I wanted to just introduce myself and not tie you up for too long, but if there was any kind of questions or rebuttal or anything of that nature to our liquor application for today. I'm here as well with my partner, Scott Bealman, so if there's any questions that y'all have at all, if you would like to.
Is this the Alabama Music Box?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I had, I was gonna ask that we lay this over, but out of business and knowing that we're trying to make downtown grow, and a lot of these council members up here, maybe other than Gina, won't remember what happened with Alabama Music Box when you're on Dolphin Street next to Grozky's and the noise and the problems we had, the brick through the window, and all those things that happened in that year, especially when we were trying to get the entertainment district put in place. You know, it's been heavily laden upon me whether or not we should move forward with this or we should not allow it. Y'all are in a location now, I think, which is gonna be next to the garage, right across,
That's correct.
Right across the street, and also next to the McDonald's there, which has a lot of traffic, but it's a confined space in the Music Box used to bring in quite a few people. So right now, I'm leaning towards the yes, but I'm gonna be watching it wholeheartedly based on all the things that were so contentious that y'all bought to that end of Dolphin Street. I want to say that was eight years ago. No, I'm sorry, eight, it's been 12 years ago. 12 years ago, where it was very, very contentious to the street, contentious to the district, and contentious to the people that lived over there. And a lot of those people are gonna still harbor those feelings when they see the Alabama Music Box come back to that end of Dolphin Street. So like I said, we're, I'm gonna watch it very closely, and if it's anything that goes astray, then I'm gonna start the process to recall the license because the last time y'all were there, to be honest, it was, it was quite awful.
Yes, sir. And if I could just speak to that, you know, we are under new ownership. I want to have something that is going to appeal to more of a demographic of everyone and be something for our community that will bring national and local acts here together and to make sure that everybody is in an environment where it creates synergy, that everybody feels welcome. And I just wanted to kind of put that out there, and I understand your concern absolutely. And I want to make sure that we are above board with council. I want to make sure that everybody is happy and that we can establish a good footing in our community. And if there is anything, I don't want it to be contentious. I want it to be a conversation to make sure that we are above board with everything.
Are you the new owner?
I am one of three.
So who are the owners?
Scott Bealman. He is here today as well, if you'd like to speak with him. He's a resident of New Orleans, and David Matthews is the third owner. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Bealman regarding 37633.
My name is Scott Bealman. My name is Scott Bealman. I am one of the new owners for the Alabama Music Box at the new venue at 659 Conti Street. Just wanted to introduce myself. I think Miranda said everything that was, you know, on my mind as well, so.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate you coming down. You live in New Orleans, you said?
Yes, sir.
Just so you guys know, I still have those videos, if you'd like to see them, from the Music Box, that during that period on Dolphin Street. I think maybe that if we revisit some of the things that happened, you know, we'll see why, you know, I have some reservations, but.
I understand that. I was not part of that at all. What we're doing now is trying to create a better version of that, that's more for inclusive of everybody and more for the arts. We're in the process of spending about $250,000 on a renovation of a building that hasn't been. Uh, we're in the process of spending about $250,000 on a renovation of a building that hasn't been anything for 60 years.
I understand. Uh, you said David Matthews was the third owner?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Robert Cloughton regarding ordinance 64015. Claire Spall regarding 64s, ordinance 64015. William Apling regarding ordinance 64015.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm William Apling. I came to talk about this and am encouraged by the delay of 30 days to look further into this matter, to get more details. And I appreciate that Mr. Ball is going to be giving the neighbors more information about what he's gonna build on this property. That's been the biggest fear, I think, for everyone at the, around that property, is they don't know what they're gonna get with the change in zoning. I would like to mention that recently, one of the neighbors brought up that she found a gourd, a gopher turtle on the location, which apparently is some sort of endangered turtle that lives in our area. I'm not real familiar with it. Um, but she did bring that up and actually sent me a picture, which I can forward to anyone that would like to see it. So I'm not really sure if there's been a study for environmental impact for that location for any kind of, uh, animals that may be living in that area since the environmental center is directly across the street from that location. But thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Teresa Betis regarding ordinance 64015. Ordinance is held over 64015, consider rezoning property located at 3300 Knollwood Drive from R1 and B1 to R3.
Uh, I'd make a motion to lay this over 30 days.
Second. Proper movement, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'd lay it over 30 days.
25018 amend Chapter 25, Article 1, Garbage and Trash, Section 5, Household Garbage, and Article 3, Enforcement, Section 33, Penalties of the Mobile City Code.
I'd like to make a motion to lay this over one week.
Second. Proper movement, second. Any discussion? Uh, Mr. President? Vice President and followed by Mr. Woods. I'm gonna ask the audience to please cease your talking. I can't hear up here. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. We, uh, spoke about this proposed amendment at pre-conference and I just wanted to briefly go over some of, uh, what was said. I don't want to, um, get into this particular amendment or slow it down, but some other things have come up that we need to address, including what happens when evictions, um, or, uh, when there is an eviction in a neighborhood, what happens when the trash and all the household belongings are put out into the yard. Also, um, donation bins and, um, illegal dumping. These are some areas that we need to take a look at, consider some, uh, proposed amendments as well. So as we go forward and looking at amendments into the, the garbage and trash ordinance, we can, uh, take those up. We did get some good news earlier. Um, I don't know if Director Lasky or someone else wanted to speak to those quickly, but one was a debris bill and the other one is for tires and being able to enforce ordinances on tires. I did get something back from, uh, one of my residents who had contacted me about some tires on the right of way and where they could actually go take them and drop them off. And so we do have a list of places where you can take tires. This was Firestone on Airport and he took them in and he said the folks at Firestone were more than nice and happy to take the tires from him. So, so all of that is good news and some progress on that. Thank you.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, again, the intention just to lay this over one week, uh, to allow time to go and adjust a, a one or two tweaks in it. Looking to, instead of, um, lumping in trash as far as, uh, just a, a small penalty or a small fine, I'm looking to separate that out, just really address the, um, uh, the garbage can, uh, aspect or the garbage cart aspect of it. So I, I do appreciate the, the one week to get everything back together. And, um, to Councilmember, um, our Vice President Gregory's, um, uh, point, uh, possibly looking at, um, expanding or, or diving into the Chapter 25 a little further once we get full comprehension of the tire and the, the private property issue. So, um, thank you again and, uh, that's it.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also requested from our attorney to look up and make sure that, uh, from a legal standpoint regarding the trash piles that being left illegally, how can we find the owners, um, first, uh, and go on and pick the trash up so our residents don't have to look at this trash for long periods of time. So they will be looking into that as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'd lay it over one week.
CIP resolutions held over 09609, transfer funds from Capital Project D1 Mobile's CIP Greenway Initiative to Capital Project D1 U.S. 45 million improvements. 21611, authorized contract with McCrory and Williams for repair and stabilization of erosion areas at Azalea Golf Course.
So moved.
Second.
Proper movement, second. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Uh, Ms., uh, Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. 09609, um, this is capital improvement on project in District One. Um, I had an opportunity this morning, you're probably seeing a lot of traffic delays, um, on Highway 45 because we're working to repave Highway 45. You're seeing sidewalks curving, others, something that people never thought would take place on Highway 45. I want to just thank everyone in the community, the administration. Um, I see people right now, um, that, people like Tim Hollis, who, who spoke and said these things that they wanted to see. I just want to thank everybody for making that happen. Uh, we was able to get that done in three years, guys. Three years, we was able to get that accomplished. Um, and now if you go down Highway 45, all the streets on the side will be paved as well. Um, and that's the, the testament of how we can do it working together. I call that the gateway to District One. So thank you to the administration. Thank you to the mayor. Thank you to my colleagues. Um, and let's go forward and make District One great. Great things will happen in District One. Thank you, Mr. President.
Um, congratulations, Councilman Penn. You're trying to be like District Three, I see. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over 01612, rescind Resolution 01793, adopted November 10th, and allocate monies to capital improvements reserve and capital improvement fund. 01613, authorize amendment number two to the agreement with WSP for mobile area stormwater mapping and resiliency planning. 08614, accept bid awards for limestone aggregate. 08616, approve purchase order to Deering Company. Excuse me, 09619, reallocate funds from Capital Project and the Capital Improvement Fund to various capital projects. 21620, authorize contract with Thomas Industries for cruise terminal parking deck repairs. 21621, authorize contract with Waste Pro USA for dumpster services at various city locations. 35622, authorize extension of a temporary site lease with new singular wireless PCS for installation of new cell facility at the cruise terminal. 60623, authorize settlement agreement and release of claims. 21631, correct Resolution 21571, adopted April 15th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Proper movement, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 03632 through 09659.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second. Proper movement, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk?
03632, reappoint Richard Meadows to the Electrical Examiners Board. 37633, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license to Alabama Music Box on Conti Street. 40634, declare the structure at 1416 Oshil Road a public nuisance and order it demolished. 09635 through 09641, transfer funds from District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7, discretionary accounts to Heroes Park to assist with upcoming events. 60642 and 643 are determined appropriations to Palmer Pillings Middle School and Quills of Valor over Mobile serve a public purpose and approved payment. 09658, transfer funds from District 6 discretionary account to Heroes Park to assist with upcoming events. 09659, appoint Robert McGinley Jr., Dr. Louis Wilson, and Barbara Horry to the Medical Clinic Board of the City of Mobile, Spring Hill.
So moved?
Second. Proper movement, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
CIP resolutions being introduced, 08644.
Per council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01645 through 37657.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of 08-651, with the rest of these resolutions being laid over for one week.
Second. Proper movement, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk?
08651, approve purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for Chevrolet Tahoe wreck repair.
So moved.
Second.
Proper movement, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Announcements.
Uh, District One, Councilman Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, of course, I acknowledge what took place, um, earlier, um, this morning when I had a chance to go down Highway 45. Also want to acknowledge the new playground that's taking place at Figures Park. Uh, we did a Tomerville Community Plan, one of the first plans like this in the city of Mobile in three years. It was a, um, plan that we basically deal with the community from business owners, educators, um, community, um, leaders. And we came together and created a plan. And one of the plans were, were coming up with ideas. And the community said they wanted a playground and their community now has a playground. So I just, um, want to commend everyone, our community leaders, everyone that was a part of that, um, to make that happen. Um, with that being said, on this past week, I was out on vacation with my family on spring break. So I didn't have an opportunity to tell the Craig family, um, I'm, you're, I'm, the family that you're in my thoughts, you're in my prayers, what took place at Sage Park. I was disappointed, um, in what took place. But I wanted the community to know that, um, we're doing everything that we can to make sure that our parks are safe. Um, and that that incident that took place, those people were enjoying playing basketball. I was there playing basketball, um, um, there in the community. And, and when you think about, and I wasn't there that day, but I have been throughout that week before. And, and I think, think about like, man, this could have happened to anyone, just being out there. They didn't have nothing to do with what took place, nothing to do with what took place. So we can't make it about what basketball or soccer. We have to make sure that it's safe. And so what I'm asking the administration, I did this in pre-council, can you give an update in some things that I requested? I requested to make sure that we have signage in place, that our cameras is working properly and we have police present, um, at our parks when the parks are open, um, when, when, when it get dark. And so, um, I'm asking Director Lasky to give us an update on what things are taking place right now.
As we discussed earlier in, uh, pre-council, um, the Department of Public Safety is taking over approximately 950 cameras citywide. 300 of those cameras are located in the parks and community centers. We're gonna concentrate on making sure that all the, uh, cameras that are in the parks are online and recording. Um, there's approximately as of Monday morning, 64 that were not. Uh, we're gonna concentrate on these, uh, first and that the monies that, uh, were designated today will go towards that effort. Uh, you'll see an increased, uh, presence during, uh, the summertime with respect to the parks after dark. Uh, and as long as there's, uh, activities going on, uh, you'll see increased patrols and the police officers there.
Well, thank you for, for listening to that request and, um, I'm looking to receive more updates. Um, I think it would be a great idea, um, to create that engagement in our community going into our summer hours. So many young people are out in our community, especially a, at our basketball courts in Tomerville as well as Sage, Sage Park. Uh, maybe with the Mobile Police Department and the Fire Department having some activities at those parks, having games and talking to our young people. But I'm asking the community to be involved as well. If you know anything, say something. If you see something, say something. Um, and, and, and let's work together to make our district and our city strong. We are stronger together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Penn. District Two, Councilman Carroll? District Four, Councilman Reynolds?
Very briefly, I just want to say, um, thank you to my fellow council members in this administration. I learned this morning that over the past five years, we have spent over $63 million in resurfacing our streets and that we are sort of teed up for the next five years to do even more than that. And I want to appreciate, I want to just say thank you to everybody who's played a part in that. And I hope that we can continue this trend of addressing these legacy infrastructure problems throughout our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Reynolds. District Five, Councilman Davis. District Six, Councilman Woods.
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and I'll let, uh, Vice President Gregory, uh, dive into the meeting later, but looking forward to spending time with her this evening. Um, but, uh, do want to send a reminder out, May 15th, to remind everyone at 5:30 at Woodridge Baptist Church, we'll be having a, um, District Six Community Meeting. That's on May 15th, 5:30 at Woodridge Baptist. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Woods. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this afternoon at 1 o'clock, we will be holding a Public Safety Committee meeting upstairs on the ninth floor where we will discuss some of what you've already heard. Uh, we're looking for updates on some of the, um, incidents that have happened recently with gun violence as well as a follow-up from the town hall meeting. So this will be at 1 o'clock on the ninth floor here in Government Plaza. And as, uh, Councilman Woods just indicated, he and I will be joining forces tonight for a community meeting. Uh, we will be at 6 o'clock PM at the Hampton Inn by Hilton in Providence Park. This will be for residents in Huntley Woods, Willowbrook, and a portion of old government who are currently in District Six but are moving into District Seven. So again, that will be at 6 o'clock this evening. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Vice President, uh, Gregory. And greetings to the citizens of District Three. On last evening, we had our, uh, community, um, excuse me, our district meeting for the South End of DIP. Our topic of discussion was talking about the TIPS and also our community center. I'd like to thank, uh, Director, uh, Rob Lasky and also Shana Smith for coming out on last evening. It was very important to have executive directors there to answer questions that many citizens had. Um, citizens was very, is very excited. Uh, one person had stated that, um, I had a packed community meeting. And the reason that is because the citizens are down there are very excited about the community center that's coming on South End of DIP. Again, I'd like to thank the City Clerk Office also for coming out last evening and also the other city staffers for coming out on last evening. Most important, I'd like to thank the citizens on South End of DIP for coming out on last evening to share your ideas and your concerns about South DIP. And also, um, on May the 20th, which is a Tuesday, uh, we will be having another community meeting, uh, for the Maysville-Odel Community. Uh, topic of discussion, uh, will be, uh, revitalize in, in, uh, Taylor Park. Uh, we are going to, um, at the end of the summer, we are going to, um, go ahead and revitalize Taylor Park, uh, put in some new rooms and redo the gym and et cetera. Uh, citizens are very excited about that. And also a topic of discussion will be, um, replenishing 741 units in the Odell Community, uh, which is, um, coming very soon. We have nine or six units that's already up and running. We brought around with 23 units on last week and we got six hundred some more units as it's coming forth. So we have some great news that's coming to the Odell Community. Uh, anything from the administration?
Yes, Mr. President. My name is Ricardo Woods. I'm licensed to practice law in the state of Alabama and I'm now, now sit as the city attorney for City Mobile. At this time, I'd like to openly declare that we need to go in the executive discussion, executive session to discuss law enforcement sensitive information that may involve an ongoing criminal investigation. And I'd ask that there be a, a roll call vote, uh, and that we not convene after this meeting.
So moved. Second. Proper movement, second. Any discussion?
President Small?
Yes.
Vice President Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Penn?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes. And we would not reconvene. Thank you all for coming.